Good morning and welcome to the July 18th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please. Again, good morning and welcome. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones and the meeting documents are available for review next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Carol can help you with that. We'll go to routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. Item two is to approve the commission meetings of minutes of July 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the July 11th minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes four zip. Item three is bills to be paid eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just would say again, there's some significant highway bills that make our weekly cost look larger than our routine expenses.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the bill, to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Reports are all filed. They are the County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for June, the Human Services Quarterly Client Satisfaction Survey, the Human Services 2017 Second Quarter Report, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Report for June, Auditor's Account for the County Treasure, and the Register of Deeds Official Statement of Revenue Collected. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those at this point? Item five, Personnel Actions. Consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item six is an application for abatement for veterans exemption for RDID sixty-nine, one sixty-nine for a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Olivia?
Yes. As you said, this is for the veterans exemption for 2016 property taxes in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, and the RDID number is six-nine, one-sixty-nine.
Is there a motion to approve the veterans exemption?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the exemption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item seven is notices and requests to authorize the county auditor to publish a request for proposals for JDC food service management. Good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Grabett, Juvenile Detention Center. As part of the federal student lunch program, every sixth year we need to RFP for our services. We're in that year right now. Request your authorization to publish the RFP and begin the process.
Okay. Is there a motion to publish that proposal?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to publish the request for proposals for JDC's food service manager, management. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Jamie. Item eight is the first reading to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of public hearing on August 15th at nine a.m. at the county commission meeting for the adoption of the 2017 floodplain management ordinance. Good morning, Kevin.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you noted, this was the floodplain management ordinance. FEMA has issued three new flood insurance rate maps for Minnehaha County and a few more for Lincoln County for the Nine Mile Creek watershed. These maps must be adopted by October 5th of 2017, so this is the beginning of the process, so it takes some time before it's effective. FEMA and the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management has reviewed our ordinance and made a few slight changes, but other than that, this is to publish the notice of hearing, and it's the first reading, so.
Any questions, Kevin? It's a massive stack of paper.
Kevin, I'm just curious, the people that are affected by these changes in this map, how are they being notified?
With every, as far as I know, it's with everybody else with the newspaper. If you look at the maps, I can pull it up here. The area in blue on this map is the area that's being affected, that is going to become new floodplain. And the, most of it's in Lincoln County. And then when you get into Minnehaha County area, very few of them are, I don't see any that are being affected on the house itself, on any residential structures. It's all going to be mostly swamp land already, so.
And maybe I could help with answer that question as well. There's been at least two public open houses. One was at the elementary school that's down there. I'm not sure which the name of it is, but there, we've had several public, public open houses. They were very well attended. Several hundred people showed up to the public open house I went to at the elementary school that was down there. The city, Jeff Schmidt and the city have notified all of the property owners within the city, Lincoln, and that included the portions of the city in Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. But as you can see on the map, and as Kevin pointed out, there, we have no residential structures that are impacted in the county. It's just one section of land that you see there, and there are, it's just agricultural land. There are no buildings that are affected.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, we always seem to have issues with the Renner area.
Yeah.
Have they been notified of the changes of the map?
This doesn't, this does not impact Renner at all.
Okay.
This is only one section, you know, about a hundred and sixty acres, the very southwest part of, of the county. And if you recall, back in January or February, we re-adopted this ordinance one, once before. That's when the, the changes to Renner took place, and they were all notified. We had, once again, several public open houses at the library, and notices were sent out to, to those people through the city and the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski?
You mentioned Nine Mile Creek. Where's Nine Mile Creek? Is it on that map, or was it?
I don't believe it is on this map, as I, I believe it's all in Lincoln County.
Okay.
This, this large blob up on the north is the headwaters of the Nine Mile Creek.
Ah.
Basically a slough. So it's a low area. That's the start of Nine Mile Creek. It flows down through Byte, I guess, and hooks up with the Big Sioux River, south of Harrisburg.
Is that the blue blob or the green blob?
The blue blob.
The blue blob.
Is the, is the Nine Mile Creek. And you may recall, we've had several large flooding events where we've had like five, six inch rains, and, oops, I just moved this. Oh, sorry. You can see that there are a couple of very large retaining basins that are in the city, right there. Those have experienced flooding, and that's sort of what prompted the whole restudy of this area. It was, and you probably recall this from your days as the city, as a city counselor, and Gerald as well, but that's in Lincoln County, but the water, I guess, came up into the basements, or close to the basements of these homes, so it, it prompted a restudy of the area. Doesn't really impact the county, that's in Lincoln County, but that's the start of the Nine Mile Creek.
Other questions for Kevin?
I'd go ahead and make a motion then, to authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to publish that notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item nine is a petition of compromise, DPNO 93354, for two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning. Melinda Storely, Commission Assistant. Before you is DPNO 93354, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. It is for a court-appointed attorney services in an involuntary alcohol commitment proceeding. The applicant had initiated the IVC, but when it came time for her daughter to be brought in to detox, Metro had called detox to confirm if her name was on the list, and was told that it was not. Excuse me. So, the attorney that was assisting the applicant, again, contacted Metro, called detox, and again was told that the name was not on the list. The petitioner's requesting the release of the lean and full with no payment, because her daughter did not receive any services.
This is an unusual case. I'm assuming that there is not anyone here representing that party?
No, that was a very difficult period for the family and for the, and for the daughter. And because of the way everything turned out, they're still going through a lot of difficulties at this time, and she just didn't want to come and present.
Understood. Commissioner Karski?
Based on the circumstances that we read, it seems like, you know, the burden is on the county for, in this circumstance. We need to forgive this lean. It's the right thing to do.
And to dismiss that, that debt to the county.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to reduce the compromise to zero, no payment.
No payment.
Okay.
Chairman, could I make an additional comment?
Absolutely.
You know, this, these IVCs for family members still become an issue, because if my wife were to turn me in for, intervene on my case to, for my protection, for her protection, she gets a bill. But if Gerald was to turn me in, he would get no bill. And there's a, I don't know why we penalize families for trying to care for their, their kin by, by billing them for this, this intervention. And we've talked about this in the past. You know, there was a case where an elderly woman was beaten to death by her child when he came home intoxicated. And there was another case we had where an elderly woman had sent her grandson in for treatment, and had been making twenty-five dollar a month payments for three years. At age eighty-two, she broke her leg, wrote us a letter, and said she had to quit her job. Could we please forgive the rest of us? It's, this type of thing is, is a pretty intimate thing that I think is for the good of the family, and I don't know why the family should be penalized. That's just my editorial comment.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to reduce the compromise of lean, or settle a compromise of lean for zero payment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melinda. Now's the time for opportunities for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment about anything that's not on the agenda, we would be happy to hear that. No one's moving, so we'll go to item ten, which is a public hearing to consider application for special events on, on on-sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta Inc. at the Blue Haven Barn. Olivia?
Yes, Prairie Pasta Inc. submitted the on-sale special event liquor license to the auditor's office for an event on August 5th, 2017. It is a wedding at Blue Haven Barn, and I have received no concerns or objections from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, or Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Any questions for Olivia?
Make a motion to approve that special on-sale liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special event liquor license. Yep, and it is a public hearing, so we will take any other input. No other input. All those in favor of the approval say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item eleven is to consider a motion to approve and consume and bland alcohol beverage license for an event on August 19th at Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. I said that right today.
It's Wagner.
Wagner in trouble with?
Oh.
It's always something. Is, any questions about that, or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the beverage license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Item twelve is to brief the county commission on the alcohol compliance check. Captain Jason Gierman. Did I get your name right this time, Jason?
Got it.
I'm on a curve today.
Captain Jason Gierman, I'm with the Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Barth had requested we come over and talk about the, the awful compliance checks that we did. It was a, it was a, it was a rough day for Minnehaha County in this respect, but I can speak in general terms, because obviously the cases are still pending, but what we generally do in these cases is we have a underage buyer go in, and they're instructed specifically what to do. They're generally on a script that we give them. And they have their ID. We've sent them in with their ID, and if they're asked a question, they're supposed to give their specific age. And the IDs say that they're under twenty-one, and as the ID actually says, this person is under the age of twenty-one years old. So basically what we did on the twelfth is we conducted a compliance check with a couple different informants, and a couple different groups of detectives, and we went out to sixty-four, sixty-two businesses were checked, and eight failed. And, you know, if you want a list of the failures or not, but basically the majority of them were out in the Hartford area. And, you know, kudos to the ones that passed, but the eight is the highest we've ever had, as far as failures. I think we've had six in the past. So, you know, we're not trying to trick people. It's not what we do. We want, we want everybody to pass. We have had that happen before. I think that was 2014, the last time everybody had passed, but, so if you have any questions for me about it, I'm happy to answer what I can.
Anyone have any questions for the captain?
Can you just explain what the penalties are for those that fail?
Well, what we try to do is, if, we, we have the buyer that's got to be over eighteen years of age. So it's a class two misdemeanor. They're cited. Whether they plead guilty or not, you know, that's, goes to the State's Attorney's Office, and they get basically a trial, and it would be a class two misdemeanor fine. I don't know exactly what the amount is, but maybe a hundred and twenty to two hundred bucks. I don't know exactly. But I know the state does fine the, the business, and I don't think they lose their license initially on a first offense. I think when you get into the second or third, I think that's when they start taking away the license. And that would be, maybe a question for the state in that matter, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, my institutional memory is this is the worst that we've, we've had. And, you know, I can remember being underage, and at my, at that time, you know, it was my job to try to buy it. Today, it's my job not to let it happen, and it, we shouldn't let it happen. And, you know, when you look at the, the injuries and the damage, I mean, just a minute ago, we, we had a petition for compromise of lean on, for an IVC, which likely had an alcohol component. And, you know, the, the damage that is done, it's just not that funny. And it's time to call these businesses onto the, on the carpet, and, and insist that steps be taken to, to prevent it. And I know that there's training for clerks that they can send their people to. There's a machine that if you can't read their ID, you can put it in the machine, and it'll tell you if that person is eligible to drink. And I'm not sure what all sanctions we can do as a county commission. Perhaps the State's Attorney might comment on that, but I see Commissioner Karski has his hand up, maybe.
Commissioner Karski?
Well, a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Thank you for being here, Captain Gierman. How often do we do these checks?
We generally try and do them once a year, or scatter them out through the years. And we hadn't, in this case, we hadn't done them for a couple of years, and that was due to other issues that we had going on in the county in, in 2015 and 2016. So we decided to do a large amount this year. We just, we just couldn't get them done due to the high amount of burglaries. It was off the chart on our burglary list on, in the, in 2015. And then in 2016, you know, we had a bunch of murders at that time that we were working on, and we just had to prioritize our, our staffing. But it's very disappointing, so we're going to continue to do these more. And what I'd also want to reiterate is that, you know, we're not trying to trick these people, but there are people that are trying to buy booze that are trying to trick them. So, you know, we had, we've had people that run it through the scanner, and it shows under twenty-one, and they still sell, or they look at the license, don't run it through the scanner. You know, it's, it is a training issue. The state does not, I don't believe the state has training anymore, but they provide the resources, online training, that the businesses can do. So it's just a, I think it's a training issue for the businesses, where they have to, you know, have their people not be scared to card people, and just can't make it so routine that you're just looking at it. Hey, they show me their ID, and they must be old enough. You know, that's, I think it just, it's so routine in that case, that they're just not looking at it and paying attention.
If I could, who tracks, on the county level, how many violations any one business has had in the last, say, five years?
We report that to the state, and then it goes to the county auditor. Is that, Olivia, is that where that goes?
Yep. Okay. And do we re, I know on the city level, we, once a year, basically, or twice a year, we had a large batch of alcohol renewal licenses. When does that come up again?
So for liquor, we'll have it around October, November of this year, and then for malt beverage, it'll happen again next May.
Okay. So before that's done, will we be provided a report of all the ones, I'm going to request that, that we be provided a report of, you know, how many violations each one of those businesses have had? And if they've had a violation in the last year, on the city council, and it'd be up to this commission. But to hear from those businesses before we renew their license, what they're doing, and, and how they're trying to prevent it. What are the penalties to the employee? Are they terminated? Most of them are. You know, and if they pass, is there a reward system for passing?
Well, there used to be, again, we would have local businesses try and, you know, give like gift cards out to the people that passed. And actually, we're working on that again, through a brewery, a local business that, you know, Sheriff Melstead might have some connection with. But, so I think they're going to try and give out some kind of gift certificate, or some kind of monetary reward for passing.
Okay. It's just my thought, and, you know, putting it out there, that we do look, take a look, hard look at those. And, you know, going back to the question of Commissioner Barth, the State's Attorney, do we, what, what are our rights, or as a commission, what can we do, or can, can't do, when it comes to that?
Thank you, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. What you can do as a commission, because you have approved the issuance of the license, is you can give notice thirty days to a licensee, and then publish a public hearing, and bring them before the commission, and ask questions, and determine at that time if you want to recommend to the Department of Revenue either a suspension, which could be up to sixty days, or a revocation of the license, which could be up to a year. And then that recommendation goes to the Department of Revenue in the state. And then the Department of Revenue, anytime it gets a violate, a report of a violation, will do an investigation, and then issue a decision. As he indicated, there are criminal charges that can be brought against the employee, which would be the State's Attorney's Office determination, final determination. And then the Department of Revenue can issue a five-hundred-dollar fine.
So the time to bring these business owners would probably be now, right after it happened, not before the license renewal. It's so we know when their license renewal's coming, what have they done, or?
Yes. If I may, I was just going to say, typically in the past, we do do the public hearing at renewal time, but of course you don't have to. That's just what we've done before.
Captain, Captain, is there a acknowledgement when the licensee does the online training that we get a copy of, or you get a copy of, that says that they have done this, or hired a new employee that needs to?
No, I don't even know if there's a requirement that they have to. I think it's just a, you know, a policy that they may have enacted, where, you know, they have to use the machine. You know, you have to take the class before you can sell. Nothing that we would require or have access to.
You think there's a benefit in requiring that?
Well, I, I would think that, you know, in any kind of training, especially, you know, when you're dealing with this, that yeah, at least, at least have the manager or the owner train somebody to say, hey, this is what your expectations are. If you don't give them expectations, you know, then, then you have this right here, what we have today. But yeah, training is, training is invaluable in this matter, so it, just to, just to have a sheet in front of you, to look at an ID, to know what a different color means, or, you know, to do the math on a date of birth. But, you know, if you're under twenty-one, it says it right on the license. Under twenty-one, it says it on the Minnesota license, it says it on a South Dakota license.
Can we, sorry, I go?
If, you know, I like what you're saying, and it's kind of the philosophy I had. It's up to us to put the pressure on the business owners to, so that they do the proper training, because if we don't put that weight on them, I guess, it's not going to get done. I mean, if we don't, we've got the carrot, we've got the stick, and we, you know, we gotta, we gotta use what we have to make sure that they're complying, and that their employees are complying. If we ignore it, and we don't bring them to us, hey, what are you doing? This is not acceptable. Thirteen percent fail rate, it's just, just not acceptable. And we need to hear from this, these business owners, what they're going to do to protect their liquor license.
Question, if I might, but Commissioner?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I'm not convinced that all of these, these establishments were licensed by Minnehaha County. I think a lot of them are licensed by the individual municipality where they're located. And so I was curious what kind of, what kind of information flow goes to those, the license, licensing entity, in this case municipalities, so that they understand.
Good question.
So use our, use our ability to encourage them to take similar steps to what you're bringing up.
You actually took the question out of my mouth, but?
I was trying to do that.
That's good. But statutorily, can we enforce this without the state's support, so to speak? My understanding from before is the state has to do this, and then we have to implement it? Is that correct, or am I wrong on that? Because our hands, we can use the carrot and the stick, but the stick doesn't have much effect.
We did have an incident earlier this year, not involving the sale, but involving not allowing a particular deputy to go into a, into the place. And that was reported to the state, and I believe there was like a seven-day punishment on that one. And, you know, another failure on that might have resulted in a higher punishment from the state, if they would have not passed the liquor check on that way. But, you know, most of this goes right directly to the state, and I think we send over to you now exactly what we did in these, so.
But if the license is issued by the city, what, what can we do?
Yeah, if you're asking me, may I?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. It would be the same procedure that you, as a board, has, that the city would make a recommendation, can have the public hearing, and can recommend the suspension or the revocation. And you had mentioned the, I believe it's a national certification that clerks, employers can have clerks attend or do online training, whichever it is. And there is a, a pretty strong stick and carrot, that if an establishment is found to have violated that law, and it was a clerk who was certified, it starts out a five-hundred-dollar fine. If the clerk is not certified, it starts out at a thousand-dollar fine. So if they're aware of the, the statute, they should be aware that there's a benefit for certification. So, if they're aware of the statute, they should be aware that there's a benefit for certification, the clerks.
Is it time for us to remind all the people who have licenses that that's what the process is, and that's what it's gonna cost? And frankly, we expect their enforcement of that, if you will, before it comes to us. The other thing you said, and maybe I heard it wrong, was, do we need to acknowledge, you know, public discussion, or ask them to come to us? Do we have to send them a notice to respond to this?
Okay, if I may?
Of course.
You're not required to do that, but if you want them to come before you, as a licensee of your board, and say, we wanna know what the issue was here, what happened, explain it to us. We send them notice thirty days in advance of the hearing, and then we publish in the newspaper one week before the hearings, so the public has an opportunity to come in and be heard. And then they should respond and come in, and then you can make your recommendation, if any, to the Secretary of the Department at that time.
It's my perspective at this point, I guess, and you certainly can chime in, but we're gonna pay for this regardless. I mean, it's one of those deals where if we don't help with the training process, and require it, and frankly, bring individuals to a public conversation, we're eventually gonna end up with an accident, or we're gonna end up with some negative effect that maybe we could have prevented by being a little more strict. And we all know, we got a huge problem with drinking, and underage drinking currently, when it's been going on for a long time. And if we don't start doing something that enforces that responsibility, I think it's not gonna go away. I'm somewhat disappointed, disappointed that we don't find out about the license education, if you will, until after an incident happens. If, if there's a way for us to make amendments to the law that says you don't get your license unless you do this training, to me, that's a prevention kind of thing, that maybe we should strongly consider.
It's okay.
Sure.
I was just going to mention that the Department of Revenue does require a public hearing at renewal time, if you don't do it sooner.
Right.
So, that will be coming either way.
But, I guess my point was, to get it done sooner, as soon as the event happens, rather than wait potentially ten or eleven months.
I mean, I think there, obviously, this discussion has brought up a lot of good ideas that we should follow up with after this meeting. I think, also, one of the things that we clearly can do, even if we don't license any of these entities that failed, is to provide encouragement and resources to the Sheriff's Department to do these more often, because things that get checked tend to get done. And, you know, part of this might be the function of the the uptick in the crime that the Sheriff's Department's had to deal with over the last couple of years, and resourcing their department, so that they haven't been able to do checks in a couple of years. And, you know, things that don't get checked do tend to fall to the bottom of the to-do list. So, that's another thing that we have power to do, I think, to try to keep compliance in check.
Captain, do you know if any of the people that are listed, if this is their second or third violation?
I don't know if that goes by a year, or what the, what it is, but I'm not aware that there's multiple violations.
Okay.
I think there's one person that maybe owns two bars that had separate violations, but not on this check, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, the, the reward program where we give a gift certificate to the ones that successfully pass the compliance check, in the, in the past couple of years, things have been so successful that it was costing too much money to keep handing out these things. And I think that that's fallen off a bit, that rewards, because, you know, everybody was passing. And so, it's, it's one of these times, I think, where we have to pull up our socks and, and go after it again here, and.
Well, thirteen percent of the people didn't pass this time, and that's expensive, because we pay for those court costs through our budgets. We also have full-time people pursuing this, so, I mean, it's time to crack down, I believe.
One of the reasons we, you know, we don't have somebody under eighteen, because that bumps it up to a class-one misdemeanor. And generally, you take somebody to jail on that, and we want to avoid that. So, we use somebody that's eighteen, between eighteen and twenty years old. And that's part of the reason that, you know, it lets us do more, because if we were taking people to jail, obviously, you'd only get one or two done. In this case, you know, we got sixty-two done with the group that we had. But again, you're doing it in the evening with detectives, it creates overtime issues, staffing with other things, and we work through it. And we're gonna do it more often, you know, I guarantee you that. You know, maybe more smaller groups at random, random times, but that comes with its issues too, because this person got checked, this one didn't. So, we try to be feral around. And, and again, I just want to reiterate to the, to the public in this case, we're not trying to trick anybody, because once they get the citation, they feel that they've been wronged, and that's, that's not what we're doing. That's not what we're doing.
Well, you're doing your job, and that's what we expect. And frankly, we all expect protection of somebody that's violating those issues, so.
You mentioned something I'm curious on the process. So, your underage person that's over age eighteen goes in and makes a purchase, they come out with the six-pack or whatever, your deputies go in, what happens?
Basically, we tell them exactly what happened. We'll bring the ID back in, and say, hey, you sold to this person, underage, and then they're issued a citation with a court date on it.
Okay. I thought there was, it's not an arrest. It's just a citation.
Again, if it was below eighteen, it would generally require us to arrest.
Okay.
And we don't want to, you know, throw somebody in jail for a class-one misdemeanor at this point, but, you know, that's why we do it that way, so.
Yeah, okay.
This is a briefing. Is there any public comment that people would like to make? Commissioner Kelly, if you'd, we'd be happy to hear from you. I think we all received his email, which we appreciate your input.
We're not always happy to hear from previous commissioners.
My little device. I'm Dick Kelly, Sioux Falls. The, there's no, I was in this business a long time ago, and there's absolutely no reason today, with the IDs, with the, with the color changes, with everything else, there's really no reason at all for anybody to fail. You can have an eighteen-year-old looks twenty-two or twenty-three, but the grocery stores are found because of potential suspensions. It's an expensive proposition. And, you know, you have to understand the difficulty in hiring, primarily for the C-stores, but the bars too, you know, just in getting people to work. But that does not, you know, doesn't allow you to, to be loosey-goosey on the law. The, I, I think the big thing is punishment. I can recall a time when we had a gas, when I was on the commission, and we had a, or consul, and we had a gas station that failed twice in a one-year period. So, when we were doing renewals about the middle of June, we just delayed his renewal until the middle of July. Now, he lost all his July fourth sales, and I think it got his attention. In another case, there was a bar over on the East Bank that, that we indicated, because there'd been too many violations there for too many things, we indicated that we would maybe have a hearing on this thing, take it to the State, and liquor license in Sioux Falls, I have no idea what they are now, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars, but that's only a one-year license. So, the fact that they lose the license, they, they lose a lot. There's a reason the state controls all the liquor stuff, and it's because it's a lot easier for the liquor wholesalers and groups to deal with the state than it is going with the individual counties. And that's good and it's bad. It makes consistent policy, but, but when you get up to the state level, you still lose a connection there to the local. A reward for obeying the law seems kind of ridiculous to me. And I think the punishment for disobeying the law should be a lot stronger. But I'll go back, you know, we, I always worried. I always worried some kids were gonna come in there, or they'd do it, they didn't do compliance checks back then, but they did. There were, there were forged IDs and everything, and it's pretty difficult to do today, I think. So, I think you need to be aware, though. One of the reasons for the high number of failures, I would guess, is that sixty-four compliance checks, or sixty-two, is a lot of, that's a lot of checks, and it had been that, that two-year gap. I think the industry kind of understands, you know, when it gets, they get lax on that, and there hasn't been any compliance checks. I think the, the industry knows it, and gets a little bit looser. The training is the big thing. And I thought the liquor dealers, or somebody was doing training, and I'm sorry to hear that that's gone, but that doesn't do any good if nobody, if they just go and sleep and laugh and go home. I think the possibility of knowing who and, or, you know, a greater fine for one who's certified versus not certified is good. But I think you need to be aware, when you're doing the sheriff's budget, if this is a major concern to the commission, and it should be, that you've, you've got to authorize in his budget the ability to carry out this dysfunction. And whether it's a person or what, I don't know, but, but I mean, you know, he, he's working on a tight budget, with all the, all the criminal activity he's had in the last couple of years, his detectives, you know, he's only got so many things you can handle. And so, I think when you're doing budget, I think if the sheriff makes a request to say, hey, we wanna have a part-timer or something like this, I think you should seriously listen, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions for Commissioner Kelly? Thank you, Dick. Any other comments from gentlemen? I'm sorry, Captain.
Hi, good morning. My name's Matt Walls. I'm here as a public citizen. And this is an issue that is near and dear to my heart. I also work in the treatment and addiction field I have for the past seventeen years. And one of the things that I do is I work with adolescents, and teens, who, many of whom have a substance use disorder. This is important for a lot of different reasons. One thing that you should know is that compliance checks are one way, are one mechanism that you have. But one thing that you should know from Prairie View Prevention, they have a stat that twenty-five percent of all alcohol consumed in South Dakota, or twenty-five percent of all the alcohol sold in South Dakota, is consumed by underage individuals. Twenty-five percent is a lot of booze. So, I think compliance checks are a great tool that you have at your disposal to help keep those businesses in check. And some of that alcohol is also stolen from businesses, who like to keep it near the door by adolescents. But some things that you should know is that I believe the responsible server training, if you have the jurisdiction to implement, implement that as a requirement to licensure, that would be a good step. Responsible server training, I believe, is thirty dollars per individual, which is pretty cheap, especially considering some of the fines and the benefits to that. If you do have the jurisdiction to increase fines and penalties, I, as a private citizen, I would certainly encourage you to do that. Is there a requirement, and I don't know, I don't believe so, but is there a requirement for folks who are selling alcohol on sale or off sale to be twenty-one themselves? If you've got underage individuals taking IDs who are untrained, are they more likely to sell to other underage individuals? And again, one of the things that we hear again and again from the alcohol industry is drink responsibly. I will say that responsible drinking starts with responsible selling. And I think businesses owe it to their customers, owe it to taxpayers, owe it to the folks who issue licenses, to sell responsibly, and with integrity. And, and again, I don't believe in discouraging good business or responsible business, but, but I do believe in helping mitigate against bad retail actors and folks who are selling irresponsibly. So, thank you, thank you for all you do. I appreciate.
Matt, thank you for coming. We do, for the record, need your address, if you would, please.
Forty-four oh zero one, South Lewis Avenue in Sioux Falls. I live just down the street from.
I know who he is. He's a good neighbor, besides. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any questions for Matt, by chance? Thank you.
Here.
Any other comments, Captain?
I have no other comments.
Thank you for being here. Your information was enlightening, and I think we'll be talking about some of the things that were discussed today.
We'll be over for a hearing when one of these comes to light, reference these, so, myself or Sheriff Melstead will be.
Good. Thank you, Captain. Item thirteen is to authorize the chair to sign an addendum to the fair management agreement dated June twenty-third to allow the use of two buildings at the fairgrounds for JDC Emergency Housing. Good morning again, Jamie.
Good morning. Previously to this, when we were utilizing the nine oh eight building, that was our backup plan, if there was ever a disaster that made JDC uninhabitable. With changes in the nine oh eight building and our service provider for shelter care, we needed to start finding a different location for that. We worked with the fair to come up with the use of two buildings temporarily. Our plan would be to get moved out there, work with the courts, and get who we can home, and move kids to other juvenile detention facilities in the state if necessary, and last resort, use part of the jail, which we know is always full, and, and would be a big inconvenience. So, at first, Kirsten believed that we were okay within the original contract with the fair. The fair wanted something more in writing, so Kirsten developed a language that is in this agreement to the addendum. They've signed it and agreed to it. I'd ask you to sign it as well.
Any questions, Jamie?
Make a motion to have authorized you to sign this, Mr. Chairman.
Jamie, my only question was, is if you had individuals in JDC that were under secure lockdown, so to speak, those obviously may be treated differently.
We would probably look for the most severe cases to actually go straight to the jail with them. But if all possible, we'd like to try to control them with our staff at the fairgrounds, and, or getting them straight to another detention facility within the state. But our first stop immediately would be at the fairgrounds, and moving people as fast as we can after that.
Sure.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I jumped ahead too quick. We have a motion and a second to approve that fair management agreement with JDC Emergency Housing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks. Item fourteen is to authorize the chair to sign a construction change order to add one mile to the eleven-point-eight-mil and overlay project under contract with Batuminous Paving Inc.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Booth, the Highway Superintendent. We have our mill and overlay project this year, like we have every year. And this year, it was about eleven-point-eight miles, is what we had contracted. The pricing came in during our original bid, very, very low. We were basically close to the lowest, but the second lowest that we've been in the last five years. The installed price for our asphalt is literally what we're paying for asphalt when we go do our own paving. And so, it's a very good price. We're hoping to be able to add one mile to the project, and that's what this change order authorizes. This change order is required to be approved by the commission and signed by the commission chairman. So, the mile that we're hoping to add is, is just west of Garrettson, where State Highway eleven takes an eastward turn. And we have one mile going from that corner point north that we would like to add to the overlay project. So, if you have any other questions, I can answer them now. Otherwise, ask for your approval of the change order.
Questions for D.J.?
Mr. Chairman, I'm obviously going to vote for this, but I would ask you, D.J., if, if it's, maybe we should do more, since the prices are low.
So, there's a catch-22 with that. We, we agree with you, Commissioner. We would like to do as much as possible. If you remember, when I talk about the right treatment at the right time, we tried to, we tried to identify any roads in that general vicinity, vicinity that the contractor's working in that required an overlay, and we weren't, we just weren't able to justify the expense. And they're not going to be willing to haul at this price several miles to a different part of the county necessarily. So, this is the one mile that we were able to justify adding. We certainly would have done more if we could have.
Thank you, and I will make that motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to cha, uh, approve the change order for the additional mile of overlay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Uh, item fifteen is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and JSA Engineers and Land Surveyors for professional services to conduct preliminary engineering and final design for the replacement structure number fifty dash oh thirty-two dash oh sixty.
Commissioners, this structure is a, a short bridge. It's an existing twenty-four-foot bridge on a township road, uh, just a couple miles south of the Buffalo Trading Post, uh, up on the northwest part of the county. And, uh, uh, right now, it was built in nineteen thirty. It's got a federal sufficiency rating of thirty-eight. Uh, it's currently posted for reduced, uh, load limits of nine tons for a single unit and sixteen tons for a combination unit. It rates pretty high in our prioritization for, uh, needing replacement. The ADT on this township road is, is only thirty. And so, uh, this is an item that we've debated back and forth in, in the department, uh, through the administration, and then also had many conversations with the commission. Uh, but we are recommending this one for replacement and have, uh, selected JSA to do the design for this project. It will be a, likely a box culvert that is, uh, is selected for replacement, uh, structure. And if you have any questions, I can answer them. But no.
Any questions for D.J. Commissioner Kerski?
What's gonna be the final cost of this whole project, D.J.?
I don't have, uh, an estimated cost from the consultant. They haven't, they haven't gotten into their work yet. Uh, from what our budgetary standpoint is looking like, I think that we're maybe three to four hundred thousand dollars for the box culvert.
Four hundred plus the sixty, or?
I would think that four hundred, I think we're gonna be a lot closer to three hundred thousand. I think four hundred will include the sixty.
Okay.
And, and we're planning on bidding this in the, the wintertime, hopefully, and, and for construction in twenty eighteen. And so, uh, uh, we should get very good bids.
Is this a township road or?
It is a township road, yes.
It is a town, and the county's responsible for the bridges on the township roads?
Anything that's defined as a structure on a township road, the county would be responsible for. And, and a structure is, is dependent on the length. If it's over twenty feet in length, then it would be defined as a structure.
Okay. And I know the commission, before I was here, you know, has had the discussions, you know, when do you not, or for thirty cars a day, does it really justify that type of money? Um, that discussion was had specifically on this structure?
We debated on every single structure on, on our township roads. Our, our township roads, uh, the, the daily traffic ranges from less than ten, uh, literally five to six cars a day, uh, up to maybe a couple hundred on, on a really frequently traveled road. We've got a couple township roads that, that are up in the five or six hundred, but that's only, uh, one or two miles on the entire township system. The, the discussion that we've had before is really centered around, uh, the history of, of our transportation network. And, and our forefathers have, have built a, a great sectionalized, uh, grid network for our transportation system, and it, and it works really well for our farming communities. Uh, if we elected to stop replacing these bridges, we would have a lot of, uh, township roads that wouldn't go through. About two-thirds of our two hundred or so bridges are on the township system. And so if we started taking everyone that's less than thirty or forty ADT off of the network, that would really create a, a sectionalized transportation network that would be difficult to navigate and, and, and ultimately, I think, would have a pretty significant impact on our economy.
And other questions or comment?
Well, I know, D.J., you, you brought a very impressive-looking big chart. That's such, is that the chart for bridges over there?
So, yes, uh, we had had a quick conversation last week about, uh, the process that we do, uh, prioritization for our bridge replacements and our bridge maintenance. And, and we try to summarize a whole bunch of data into a spreadsheet, uh, that is easy to navigate and easy to, uh, pick important facts out of. And so I just brought an example, a PDF of, of what we look at when we're prioritizing our projects. And, and you can see this one is sorted by, uh, by this, uh, federal sufficiency rating, which is one of the parameters that we look at. And a lot of the ones that, a lot of the bridges that, that rate poor are all on the township system right now because the last several years, we've really focused on our county highway system. And so it just so happens that a lot of the ones that we're looking at replacing in the next, in the five-year plan, uh, they do, uh, they are located on a, on the township system.
Go ahead.
As you said, we can see, but I can't see those from here. In fact, I can't see them when they're only a foot and a half away from it. Uh, is there a way you can send us that, uh, PDF so that we can look at that? And I think it's important for the commission to continue to look at the rankings and, but when they are gonna come up in the process of being either rebuilt or completely remodeled, if you will. Uh, not only from a bridge structure, but also for what highway projects we're doing next, what miles of, uh, roads that we're doing, the anticipated cost and the annual appropriations that we're gonna need. I think, I think it's important for us when we get those questions and are brought additional, uh, opportunities, if you will, that we know where the priorities are on those. So if we could get not only that in a readable format, if we could get those worksheets, that would be great.
Okay. Yeah, we prepare, uh, project data sheets for every single project in our five-year plan, uh, that's included in our long-range plan. So, uh, we can certainly send those over to you guys.
Please. Any other questions for D.J. Commissioner Kerski?
A question and kind of an observation first. You said twenty feet is when they become a structure, right? So for, all because of about thirty inches, where this has become a structure for the county to replace and spend a lot of money on. If you replace it with the, um, multi-cell box culvert, what's the life expectancy of a structure like that?
Uh, technically and officially, probably seventy-five years is what the code would say. Uh, for a box culvert, we would expect that we would easily get a hundred years out of a brand-new box culvert.
Okay.
Especially, uh, this one in particular on a township road, uh, would likely be cast in place as opposed to a, a pre-cast unit that's, and that's hauled to the site and installed. And so, uh, a pre-cast, uh, unit might not last as long as a cast-in-place unit. And so we would, we'll expect to get a hundred years out of this. Uh, but the design guideline, I believe, calls for a seventy-five-year de, design life.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Ker.
You know, the, uh, the traffic on this road may not be great, but, you know, we just, the state has just rebuilt Highway nineteen there. And it seems to me that, uh, that area is ripe for additional, uh, development. And, uh, this township road, uh, isn't used that much yet. But it, once it's replaced, it, uh, the traffic may increase. And, you know, our ancestors, eighty-seven years ago, built it. And if it lasts us another hundred years, uh, you know, someone in the twenty-one, twenty-one seventeen will be wondering if, uh, four hundred cars a day is enough to warrant, uh, replacement. But, uh, you know, this is the question that we get is, you know, our ancestors were willing to make this investment. And I, I think, uh, it's made our county prosper, and we should continue.
Other comments or questions? We have a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item sixteen is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the Department of Transportation for participation in the countywide rumble strip pavement marking stripe, not strip. Pavement marking project PH zero zero two zero, I think that's dash one eighty-eight. And I'm not sure what the county number's for, but PCN dash oh five W two.
It's the state nomenclature. So Commissioners, uh, very similar to how the state, uh, ha, has a countywide signing project that we've participated in in the past, and the countywide striping program where they stripe, uh, all of our roads every year. Uh, they have identified the need for, uh, rumble strips as, uh, a safety measure for rural highways. And they've also identified some federal safety funds, uh, to pay a one hundred percent of the cost to install these rumble strips in multiple counties. And so, uh, they contacted us and, and, uh, worked with our engineering staff to identify, I think, just over sixty miles, sixty-five miles on our system that they feel would be good candidates, uh, for the installation of some additional rumble strips. And so, uh, this agreement or this, uh, yes, this agreement is to basically state that, yes, we're, uh, interested in participating in the program. And once this program starts, which will be after our execution of the agreement, uh, then they will, uh, solidify the mileage and the locations of those rumble strip installations. And I'm sure that they'll have another agreement that they'll want us to sign further on, uh, similar to how we sign multiple different agreements for the signing, or for the, uh, uh, striping projects. And so this one is essentially confirming to the state, uh, that, yes, the county commission is interested in participating in the program, and there will be no cost to the county.
Commissioner Kerski?
Over the Fourth of July holiday, I traveled up into North Dakota and got to travel a lot, several of their state and county roads. And, um, they have the rumble strips like we do on the sides, but they also put theirs in the middle. Any thoughts or considerations to doing that? Why we would or would not? I mean, the lane deviation, that type of thing?
We certainly have considered it. Uh, centerline rumble strips have become a lot more popular in the last few years, last five to ten years. And we haven't done any yet. Uh, the, the cost for maintaining them, uh, can be slightly higher because then anytime you do any pavement treatment, you have to re, um, recut the rumble stripes. Uh, sometimes you can get away from, uh, doing that on the outside edges because you don't bring your full pavement maintenance all the way to the end of the pavement. And so, um, we had, the majority of our accidents are off the road, not crossing the center line. And so, uh, we haven't, we haven't looked into it as far as a project yet, but it's definitely been a consideration.
So, this agreement would be just, is... The purpose of the agreement, basically, is to look at just the cost of doing it? Is that?
The location.
And location.
Identifying the location. And then, uh, once the locations are identified and they have a, a physical project, I think they'll want us to sign another agreement saying, this is the project, this, these are the locations, and this is gonna be the cost of the entire project. And, and that will become important because if it does, uh, surpass a thir, a certain threshold, which I think is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding, uh, then it subjects us to a, a federal audit, which would be okay. Uh, but they wanna make sure that we know that upfront.
Are there any studies on the center stripe?
Absolutely, yes.
That you could share with us or, you know, forward to us so that we can see what the cost and benefit may be?
Sure. I can, I can certainly send those over.
Thank you.
And where they're mostly important is if we do have a lot of those accidents where people are crossing the center line or around curves. Uh, in addition to additional signage around the curves, you can put the rumble stripes down the center line around the curves to prevent people from crossing over the center line.
Okay.
But I can, I can send an FHWA study showing that. It's a white paper.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, looking for a motion to approve the agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation and participation in pavement marking system.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seventeen is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Howe, Inc. to replace the fifty-year-old boiler at the JDC in the amount of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. And the motion needs to include award the bid to Howe, Inc. Mark, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Croon's Facilities Department. Um, on June thirteenth, the commission authorized publishing notice to bidders for the boiler replacement at the Juvenile Detention Center. Um, on July twelfth, we held, held a bid opening, and Howe, Inc. had the low bid of ninety-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. The low bid, along with fifty-five hundred for engineering fees, comes to a total cost of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. The state's attorney has reviewed the contract and edited, and we have a final. And I'm requesting commission approval for the chair to sign the contract between Howe, Inc. to replace the boiler at the Juvenile Detention Center.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Howe, Inc. and to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Howe, Inc. to replace the fifty-year-old boiler.
Second.
Any questions? Um, all those in favor of the agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Mark. Item eighteen is to consider a motion to appro, approve the revised hourly rates for the Board of Mental Illness.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. And before you today is a resolution to update the hourly rates for the Board of Mental Illness Activities. State law requires this to be done by, by resolution, and, um, it has not been done for over seven years, um, the update on there. The attached resolution would raise the hourly rate from ninety dollars to ninety-four dollars per hour. The board chairs are licensed attorneys who have several years of experience in mental illness involuntary commitments. The rate for primary alternative board members would remain at thirty-two dollars per hour, and the rate for qualified mental health prevent, professionals, QMHPs, um, is clarified as up to ninety dollars per hour. So with that, we would ask for a motion to accept that resolution.
Uh, any questions?
Mine is more of a comment. I just, this came up during budgeting, and, um, Jim Ostie was actually very cooperative during that process where, um, he sat down with Carol. They were able to really look hard at his budget and, um, cut out almost a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, I think. But it also came up, the fact that this had not been looked at and revisited in a long time. And I, I'd be strongly in support of, of doing this, out of fairness, if nothing else.
That doesn't mean you haven't been cooperative in the past, Jim. It's just you were more cooperative this time. Commissioner Kerski?
Uh, how do we determine the rate? I mean, do we use a market analysis?
For the board chair? That happens to be the rate that the, um, courts, the state courts have set for private attorneys.
Okay.
It is the court-appointed counsel fee rate in South Dakota at the present time, which, uh, several years has been going up, two dollars per year. Somehow connected in part to the increased cost of living as found by our Supreme Court.
So, the purpose of this, basically, is to do what the state says we have to do?
Well, no, it's to fix the inequity of being paid less than standard court-appointed counsel fee rates. In effective January one of two thousand eight, my predecessor persuaded the commission to go with ninety dollars an hour for the primary chair and eighty-five dollars an hour for the assistant chairs. Uh, nine years later now, that puts everybody, uh, the assistant chairs are nine dollars less an hour than court-appointed counsel rates. That's not fair to them, given their dedication and their commitment and experience. So, it was necessary to bring it up to that bottom rate. I still support the notion that chairs ought to be paid more than that minimum rate. But I understand the budgetary straits you find yourselves in, so.
You do need to identify yourself and give us your address.
My, my name is Jim Ostie. I'm the Chair of the County Board of Mental Illness, and my address is sixty-five twenty West Fifth Street here in Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you for your help with the budget.
Yep, thank you.
Motion?
And make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the revised hourly rates for the Board of Mental Illness. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Uh, item nineteen is to consider a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty eighteen provisional budget for Minnehaha County.
Good morning, Commissioners. I, this is the moment you've all been waiting for, is the adoption of the fiscal year eighteen Minnehaha County provisional budget. Uh, the provisional budget stands at one hundred and twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. That is a big number for us. And I'm gonna go over, helping you understand and the public understand where those numbers all come from. For reference, this number does include forty-six million dollars for the jail, which, uh, for the jail expansion project, which will go into construction next year. Without the jail expansion project, the total would be eighty-two point four million dollars as compared to fiscal year seventeen provisional budget at eighty-two point five million dollars. So, the fiscal year eighteen budget challenges included and reflected restricted funding opportunities from the state and increasing workload for public safety due to alcohol and drugs. due to alcohol and drugs, and an environment that provides competition for quality employees. When you started this process in early June, you had a cash-applied number of seven-point-nine million dollars, which was higher than what the budget would want to absorb at that time. So you diligently reviewed budgets to reduce this request. Of that total budget of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight point four million dollars, the general fund is at fifty-five point eight million dollars, which is an increase of two percent over the provisional budget from twenty-seventeen. The highway fund is thirteen point eight million, which is a decrease of nineteen percent. And this, as I said, includes the forty-six million dollars for the jail expansion and the associated parking costs. The general fund cash applied stands at four million, five-hundred-and-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Regarding opt-out dollars that you'll be accessing for next year, in two thousand fifteen, the commission approved a three-point-five million dollar opt-out of which one-point-five million was accessed in that year, or for fiscal year twenty, fiscal year sixteen, and fiscal year seventeen. For fiscal year eighteen, an additional opt-out of one-point-four million will be utilized for a total of two-point-nine million of the three-point-five million dollars. Six-hundred thousand dollars of that two thousand fifteen opt-out of three-point-five million dollars will still be available. You had a total of twenty-four million, twenty-four county-funded full-time positions being requested. There were seven new positions that are included in the provisional budget, one appraiser in equalization, a caseworker in human services, two positions in pre-trial, one position in the treasurer's office, one deputy sheriff, and one correctional officer. Both of these are within the sheriff's department. In addition, three positions that were grant-funded in the state's attorney's office moved to permanent positions. And during this calendar year, the commission approved six additional correctional officers and three additional staff for the state's attorney's office. This was in response to jail growth and Marcy's Law. And both of these, you will see, probably come up again this year because they will require budget supplements as these were out-of-cycle approvals that you did. Those positions were all included in the fiscal year eighteen budget. For comparison, the fiscal year eighteen budget includes a total of nineteen additional county-funded positions as compared to fiscal year seventeen, of which seventy-four percent are either in state's attorney's office or under the sheriff. Revenue growth, we will talk about where the money comes from and where those additional dollars come from. The CPI adjustment that the state allows is adjustment of one percent, which means an additional three-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. The growth adds two-point-eight-four percent, which adds eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. In comparison, last year, the provisional budget had growth at three percent or eight-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars. So very similar numbers. You do have a public hearing on this coming up. This will be the Tuesday after Labor Day, as state law prescribes. And at that point, you'll get this budget back at you with just a few updates, with things that we know. We'll go through and do salary updates of anything that has changed during this particular period of time. So we will bring that back to you, and you will be needing to pass a final budget by the end of September.
Thank you, Carol. Any comments, Commissioner Karski?
Last week, at the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, which happened right before our budget hearing, we had presentations from a couple of the school boards, Harrisburg and Sioux Falls. And they put up a slide that shows, you know, how your property taxes are allocated. Wait for the airplanes to quit flying over so you can hear me. Most people probably aren't aware that the county is the smallest user or smallest portion of your property taxes when you're, when you pay that every year. So when you reference an increase of two percent, that's not of your total property tax. That's strictly of just the county's portion, which probably equates to less than seven-tenths of a percent.
Well, actually, I will tell you that in Sioux Falls, if you live in, within Sioux Falls and are within the Sioux Falls School District, twenty percent of your property taxes go to the county. The city is, has a few more points than that, I think it's twenty-five or twenty-seven percent. And then school district, and plus, there may be some miscellaneous items that you have. If people would like to go through and figure theirs, we do have a worksheet that equalization and the auditor's office prepare for us annually. Would be more than happy to email that out to people if they contact us.
I guess my point is that, you know, two percent is probably a misleading number because if you look at two percent of your entire property tax, that seems like a big number. But when you look at, you know, maybe two percent of just the county's portion of that, that number becomes a lot smaller and more manageable number.
Correct. Any other comments?
I would just say that, again, I would like to thank the department heads and their staff for all of the hard work that they did. This was a struggle from day one when we first got sticker shock on what the requests were. I would like to thank Carol and Kim and Bob and all the people that worked hard every day to make the changes and kept us informed on what we did or asked them to do. So thank you so much for that because it was painful, to say the least. This has been a real struggle again this year because of the system of government that we have that frankly gives us lots of responsibility but no revenue, especially with the growth of public safety and legal issues, which are obviously part of that public safety issue. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you again to the staff. Thank you to the other commissioners who worked diligently through pages and pages and pages of information. So I'd consider a motion to adopt the provisional budget at this point.
Same with second.
A motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to reiterate the point you made and, you know, the staff that worked very hard here. We didn't get a lot of folks coming to visit with us, legislators or advocates for this or that. It was really the staff and this commission that worked very hard to get this accomplished. And while there could be another change or two going forward, we've done our work.
Again, on September fifth, we will adopt the final budget. Correct. Any other comments? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second to approve the provisional budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item twenty, are the county commissioner liaison reports?
Mr. Chairman, there was recently an article on Kellogg News about Wall Lake, and they referenced the fact that Minnehaha County does not do water quality testing, and neither does anybody else at Wall Lake. And I've asked our planning director, who went out and looked at things, to come and report to us.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Jeff Barth is correct. There was a news article in the Kelland News on Friday night. The reporter called me about five o'clock on Friday and asked if we tested the water. She and, I think, her son had been out there and noticed the algae had blown up on the shore and was concerned. And I indicated that, and we do not test the water. And when we did test the water, we, we only tested for fecal coliform, not blue-green algae. I don't know what that would cost to do a test for blue-green algae. But their concern was the toxicity of blue-green algae. So I will tell you that this is not uncommon. It's, it happens several times a year, given certain weather factors and weather conditions. When we get a, this typically happens when we have warm weather, and secondly, followed up by a strong front that comes out of the north northwest. And that blows across the lake, pushes the algae up onto the beach. I was out there over the weekend on Sunday, and I was again out there yesterday morning. There's, the algae is gone, it's dried up, dissipated, and it's no longer on the beach. I'm assuming, given the strong wind that we had yesterday, the north side of the lake has the algae that has blown up on it. So it moves around the lake, it's a common occurrence. We don't test for it. If the county, if you would like to direct me to figure out who tests for blue-green algae and what that might cost, I can do that. But we have never tested for it in the past. And I think it goes without saying, don't let your children drink the water at Wall Lake when you're out. It's, and your pets. But we do not have a sign that says, please don't drink the lake water. But it, and I'm not a, I'm not a chemist. I don't know the difference between regular algae and blue-green algae. And so it, it was, you know, there was a blue-green tint to it on Friday when, when it was blown, when it had blown up onto the shore from the front that it, that came through the area on Wednesday night, I think, or Thursday.
Thank you for going out there to look at that.
Mr. Chairman, I would just follow on and say that, you know, the state doesn't test, and the federal government doesn't test. And while we do have a park there, the frontage we have on the lake is certainly not a very large fragment of the coast of that lake.
It is a public lake, it's considered waters of the state. So DE and R, Game Fish and Park has a dock out there, a boat dock and a recreation area. So there are, you know, several players out there.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, I would make one other comment, which is, it wasn't listed, but the East Dakota Water District has a meeting this Thursday morning.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business?
Just a question, I was looking at our calendar for next Tuesday, and it says we have a joint meeting at five-thirty, not five o'clock? Yeah. Okay, so you have to double-check the time. Thank you.
And as always, I have a board meeting that afternoon, and I can't attend.
Someday, I'm going to check that out.
You come right on over. Any old business? Do we have a executive session? Okay. Pardon? And it's not for all three of those?
I'd move it to executive session for personnel.
Second, motion and a second for the executive session for personnel-related issues. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Motion to adjourn into exec.
Same with?
Same with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.